Amanda is still traveling, I think she'll be out for another couple of weeks. Let's talk for a second about our next meeting. The next meeting is scheduled for the Monday of Thanksgiving week. There are at least two on the board that are not around for that, so that I think we're gonna push our next scheduled planning board meeting until Monday, December 4th. Okay?
Yep.
And Alex, we don't need to talk about this now, this is just for...
We could talk about that after, if you like. Yeah, that's for the board to look at. So, maybe at the next meeting or going after, we'll set that following years' calendar.
Yeah, I also apologize about what's on the agenda, what's not on the agenda. Appreciate John and Rich, you being here. You know, if you're here, we're happy to hear it. The, um, so yeah, glad to talk and glad to listen. The, um, the other item on the agenda was 649 Hill Street. They asked for a post, uh, to be kicked to the next meeting. I didn't come in until today at 2:00, which is past the deadline. We have the same policy that the other land use boards have in terms of requests to adjourn to the next meeting, and that is Thursday, the Thursday before at noon, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so they missed the deadline. Uh, does, so I'm gonna do 640, we're gonna do 649 Hill Street first, right? Anybody have any questions on that one? That, you know, that one's been in our Dropbox file for a while. I think everybody's pretty clear. Do you have a question, or do you have anything you wanna say?
Well, there was some correspondence, right, saying that they might have to go to the ZBA? Or was I looking at some older correspondence? That this was the one where they, they might need some relief, right, from the...
They, they would.
From the dimensions? And I thought there was a news, something added to our Dropbox about...
I think it was just an updated memo from Kathy that noted, if the board was willing to entertain that layout, it's substantially substandard. So, there would be large relief necessary if they were to go that route.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, right, even if they got, I'm not sure as-is, it's gonna get any support.
Kathy's memo, Kathy, your memorandum raised a lot of major issues to squeeze this thing in the back of that lot, not minor ones. So, I would think, I would think that they can do a lot if they come back to us and we're not the lead agency. It's, it's, our duties are really upheld to do anything on the line that they, that they propose.
Kathy, could you give us a two-minute or brief summary of the major issues with that application?
Um, sure, sure, I can. Um, so this is a proposal for a flag lot in a split-zoned area. And the way they had presented it in the, on the plan, actually kind of reversed lots A and B as far as the calculations go. But basically, they had assumed that the rear lot was entirely in the R-40 district instead of the, I mean, the R-20 district, and assumed what the area requirements would be for that. And they'd actually need to have, it's sixty thousand, I'm sorry, I don't have the memo in front of me, I'm looking at it right now, trying to find it, but I believe it's sixty thousand square feet that they would be required to have for that flag lot, and not including the flag pole portion. Um, and they are severely substandard. Um, let's see, proposed A is required to be, let's see. Sorry, even if it wasn't, it would be thirty thousand, sorry, let me just start over. Um, if they were within the R-20 district, then they would need thirty thousand square feet for the flag lot, and that would be for the flag portion. But because they're split zone, and actually, the, um, the assumption would be that they would have... God, I'm getting so tongue-tied. If they were in the forty thousand square foot zone, they would need sixty thousand square feet within the flagged portion of that proposed lot. They are much closer to the thirty thousand square foot, the twenty thousand, than the forty thousand square foot assumptions. That was very poorly put, I'm very sorry.
Yeah, and Kathy, let me just interrupt there.
Yeah, thank you.
The majority of that back-proposed flag lot, the majority of that is in a R-40 district, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct. So, it would be much closer to sixty thousand than the thirty thousand.
Right.
The requirement would be.
Yeah. So, for all intents and purposes, because so much of that piece is in a R-40, I think it would be considered R-40, yeah. And therefore, require sixty thousand square feet of space.
Correct, correct. And they would, additionally, they would need to subtract the portion in the flagged pole portion of the lot, which they don't do either.
So, i- is this a candidate for a shared driveway, or is that not? Or we have to ask the applicant that words two different uses? Or do we not know?
That's not, that isn't what they would, that's not what they proposed.
Yeah, that's not what they proposed, yeah. I just, because I noticed your memo said we, you know, generally discourage flag pole, uh, lots for a two-lot subdivision, but I just wondered if there was an alternative here. Um, but I guess that's something we could discuss next time.
Well, depending on, there's probably multiple ways you could arrange driveways, but because of the shape of this lot, you can see in the memo, there's no alternative except for a flag lot. There's no, the lot doesn't have enough frontage.
Or shared.
To have two lots on, on Hill Street.
Right.
One lot will always be behind the other.
Right, but a shared driveway is a, not a possibility?
Potentially, not in the configuration that they proposed.
Yeah, not where they have it, yeah, I was just wondering if we...
It would be a, a different type of flag.
Yeah, if they wanted to come, present something, another configuration.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they were my words, but someone said that this was severely substandard application. So, I'd like to, uh, a motion to, uh, for a vote to disapprove this application if there are no more questions or clarifications. Okay, motion to disapprove, any second?
Paul's second.
And it's a subject to a written decision to be prepared by council, if you'd prefer?
Correct.
Okay, we can have that ready by, this, next meeting is December 4th?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, is this a name-by-name, uh, this is a name-by-name?
A name-by-name.
Yeah, Willa?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Debbie? Aye, okay. All right. Other than Fowler, the Fowler Farm, is there anything else here? So, okay. John, the podium is yours.
Thanks, thank you very much. I appreciate it. My name is John, John F. Fowler, this is, uh, Haley Largens, my office, also here, and, um, the people, Rick Fowler, here as well. Since, um, I met with Rick, Rich, I should say, and the client, and we took into consideration everything that the board said at the last meeting. So, I think probably because he's the design professional and is usually a lot clearer about explaining these things than me, I would just ask Rich Lauren to go through the, the changes. By the way, we did show this to, as I think I stated in my November 2 letter, we did show this, and it was put from Dean Mackler on this as is required under the town code in terms of his thoughts on, in terms of emergency vehicle access and other fire matic, uh, issues. But, um, if I, if, you wanna tell the board what we did?
Good evening, Richard Warren, Pinterest signs. Um, well, we heard at the last meeting, um, the board asked us to take the two lots that were situated in this location and move them down here to the southern portion. So, this way, that you would have open space along Fowler Street and the turn of Wickapaw Road. So, we've done that for you. We got rid of the longer flag lots that were coming down through here because you had a concern about the extended flag lots. We put a cul-de-sac in through here. And we kept it tight against the property line because as we've discussed with you, the intention here is to try to preserve this for farming for as long as they can. So, this way, the cul-de-sac is pushed up against the side so that it interferes with the least amount of the property. We have left a five-foot-wide strip along the property line that effectively would be part of Lot 7. But the reason we did that was to prevent this lot adjoining it from having a front yard on the street. So, this way, we don't change any of the zoning configurations for the neighboring property. And it gives the ability to put some, there's an existing hedge there right now, so this way, it's maintained in that area. Um, that shortened up the flag lots for lots 5 and 6. Um, we've shown a hydrant down here at the end of the cul-de-sac, which is something that the fire marshal requested. He asked for us to also show the existing hydrant that's over here at the corner of Wickapaw, um, right here at this intersection that makes the bend. And this is an existing hydrant that we had shown on the last plan, which is right here, kind of in the center of the north-south frontage of Fowler. We also changed through here the access, common access easement for lots 3 and 4. He asked us to show a turnaround for an emergency vehicle. So, we extended the access easement a little bit to the south to be able to show with a turnaround. And we did a turning template to show that the emergency vehicles can get down through here without any difficulty and be able to turn around and get out.
Gonna sprinkle the fire suppression system?
Uh, there's an agreement that all the buildings here in the subdivision be sprinkled. They would have sprinklers in any future construction.
We put that in, in a covenant, so there'll be fire suppression systems.
So, we put that as a note on the map, just, this way.
What, what, is, what covenant is this?
What Dean said, in addition to shortening up these areas for quicker emergency vehicle and fire apparatus access, would you be willing to put fire suppression systems in all the houses? Now, I will tell you that the village code says you have a two-and-a-half-story house. I don't know what people are gonna build here, they're gonna build two or two-and-a-half.
A fire request.
Sprinklers. Yeah, it's a fire marshal request, but it's a good one. So, we'll covenant that.
I just, I wanna check in on this source.
Oh, okay.
The other thing we did, um, was there was a question about the width of the flag lots. They were shown at twenty feet, they're now all at twenty-five feet wide. So, we don't not need to get any variances for the frontage requirements for this, um, that we showed. So, I think that we've done what you've asked us to do at the last meeting. Um, hoping that this is something that you find acceptable, and we can continue with it.
I, Richard, I, I only struggle with the word "ask." We, we get a lot of comments from a lot of people about, of the, of the visi, the glaring visibility of sort of the last of, this is a major wonderful piece of land that a lot of people know about. A lot of people seem to know about it, who have no idea where Phillips Pond is and don't care. And who I don't think have ever used the road to go down to the beach there. Some few of us are burdened by a lot of access to the beach. A lot of family have used it for generation, for generations. So, there's a mixture coming to us of objectives. So, it wasn't an ask. We, we're, we're trying to make suggestions for consideration of the applicant, who I assume, young Rick is here. He's, he is, he's posing as an applicant, and he knows most of them. And so, to get the, if they're, if they, if this is a consideration to them, that's wonderful. It responds, it's responsible to a lot of suggestions we're getting to save the corner, like the north corner is, has to do with the rhythm of the neighborhood. A real problem is probably that it's at the edge of the village, and there's a lot of concerns of what happens across the road.
Across the street?
With the town, it's a little, town is a little, you know it well, town, and even the honorable counsel here, you know, he knows it really well. The town has different requirements with stuff that's set aside and the rhythm of this, this development. And so, stuff's coming at us from that perspective too. And we're trying to be responsive to the, what's this coming in? And make the best balanced decision from these inputs.
Alan, candidly, if these are suggestions that are coming in, uh, the only suggestions that I've heard on, on the record is what's...
Yeah, no, it's, the problem is the record. The, the people make phone calls, people come to, uh, people come to trustees and stuff like that. We, we get, we get a lot of input, and we're trying to reflect as much of the input as we can to make a balanced decision.
Even more reason, even more reason, yeah, but, no, but even more reason, if I may, even more reason why, if I may, why you should, why you should move this to a public hearing. Because that's the probate form.
Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna get it eventually too, absolutely.
Can I just clarify something here? Um, and I appreciate the, we appreciate the patience that you've shown with this.
Just a while a year ago.
Yeah.
No, Richard's been, said he's been doing it for fifteen years.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think that...
That's an important statistic to me. Major statistic.
And I think that, um, I was hoping, or we were trying very hard not to give direct feedback, um, up until this point. There were a lot of questions that people might have, uh, that might have implied a certain direction that the, that the planning board, uh, was taking. But, um, if that was heard as, do this, don't do that, or this is what we need, this is what we don't want, then I think that was miscommunicated, and, and I apologize for that. And I think that it's been in the last couple of, um, weeks that the, um, thinking has sort of, um, come together. And people, um, from the, the feedback, um, are, are starting to understand this now and ready to give that direct feedback that you're asking for. And let me just finish. This, I think, you know, we got it in the middle of the week, I think, because there were some technical issues with getting in the Dropbox. This is a great step forward in the direction that the planning board was hoping this would go, so...
That's good to know.
Um, thank you very much for that. But I don't think it's all the way there yet, and I think that, um, you know, I don't wanna speak for the board, but I think there are some things that we can communicate to you tonight, which are probably, and it's probably four or five, uh, very specific points.
I, I just wanted from Ms. Largens' position to state something very, very important, though. It's very, very important. This is a family that's been here, I, almost as long as my family, I always get nicked about that. But in any event, the yield on this property, and I was accused of, of threatening the board with this, but I wasn't, I was just laying out, I have to create something called the yield map to show what the as-of-right development on this property is. And we did it, and it's a twelve-lot subdivision. So, talk about trying really hard to be sensitive. There, this is five lots less than the as-of-right yield. It's an R-80 zone, we had twelve lots with a standard subdivision. And the, there is no mandatory cluster in this, uh, excuse me, mandatory agricultural open space. And this is really important, because this is not just open space.
It's a village.
Agricultural open space, and there's a significant difference. Because agricultural open space is something different than the open space that you'd see up in the Moraine area, where you don't touch it. Agricultural open space, which is fostered by the, um, um, which is fostered by the, um, by the, uh, the, the master plan, as it should be. Um, states that it's supposed to be used for agriculture. Uh, and which, which we would commit, and in, in, in covenants that run with the land, that there would never be any residential development on this. But I, I, and I, I am, you know, waiting with bated breath to hear your comments. But I, I think, superimposed over this entire discussion, has to be, this is the result of some, some real hard discussions with the family, because we met with a bunch of people who thought that we shouldn't be giving up. Giving up, five lots. And we came up with something that really, uh, is just in a cer, to certainly be a continuation of the largesse of the Fowler family.
Yep.
Uh, one of the, um, one of the subdivisions that was spoken in the past, which I think, by, which shares my concern about this, which is an incredible missed opportunity, was the subdivision on Wickapaw and Old Town preserved absolutely no agricultural space. Really, what should have been, the open space should have walled and all should have been to the east in one large undivided lo, uh, block, which is what, when people came to me before the property was sold, I said, "That's what they're gonna do," because that's the only thing that makes any planning sense. Uh, and it, and it would have been, but up to, interestingly enough, a six-acre parcel that was donated to the village by the Fowler family. So, this, the dedication of Fowler Street, all, this is just a continued example of, of, in effect, the community-minded spirit and largesse of the Fowler, Fowler family. So, I hope everyone superimposes all of that over the discussion. And I say that as an advocate, yes, but also, it's a truth, it is. So, uh, thank you for letting me interrupt you, Mark. Just, I thought particularly for the benefit of a new member, that I wanted, I wanted you to hear that. Thank you.
Um, yeah, that, no, that, that's fine. The only thing I was going to, um, say i- is, um, we appreciate, and I think, uh, people at much higher pay grade than I, um, it, these, these land use boards can be a frustrating experience. And, and there's a concerted effort to fix that.
Appreciate that, too.
And take the frustration, and personally, I've been in front of them, right? And it's frustrating, because you never know what they're gonna say. That you, you keep com, a lot of times, you keep coming back, and they're just asking for more and more and more. And, um, some of us are really working hard to, to change that. So that we, you know, at least the goal with, um, this board, and we've all talked about this and, and we're in agreement, is to listen carefully, right? Ask good questions, uh, understand it really well, and then come back, a minimum amount of times, with feedback, you know, this is what we think is gonna work for the village. Uh, this is what we think is gonna work in the context of the master plan. And this is what we think, you know, we can get approved, right? We'll get a majority of votes. And so, if this process has been frustrating and that hasn't, you know, that hasn't come across, or you got the wrong message, apologize, you know, we're trying to make it better. And I think going forward, you know, it'll continue to get better. So, that, that's the, that's the MO that we're trying to, so that aside. This is a step in, in my view, this is a step in, uh, a big step in, in the right direction. Are there any other points that people wanna bring up? Or other things that they notice in this that, um, are major criteria for moving forward?
Yeah, it's, they're, you know, I, I, I think it's a step in the right direction. I think we're far, though, from a meeting of the minds in terms of some of the things that have been requested in, you know, by various board members in previous meetings. One of the things is that your first iteration of this site plan had a public, not a public park, a park, park space for the use of the community, which I assume the dimensions that you got for that have to do with the hundred. If you do a hundred-lot subdivision, you have five acres, you know, but this is a seven-lot subdivision, so it would be, I think that John probably came up, or you came up with that number based on that, but that's now gone from the plan. Now, the problem with that is, you know, the board can ask for a park fee or a park. I think, you know, at least some of the members have expressed an interest in a park. That park has been taken away. There is an ag reserve that's a substantial amount of, you know, percentage of the property, twenty-five percent. But the litigation around ag reserves, and this is kind of in the press every other week, is that the applicant or some subsequent owner can come back and ask for a basketball court on an ag reserve, can ask for farm housing on an ag reserve, can ask to increase the size of these buildings, um, unless we have covenant and restrictions attached to this application that clearly state that those types of things cannot happen, and that the applicant or a future owner can't come back with those kind of changes. Because although this is, you know, three hundred and almost ten thousand square feet of green, it's not open green area. It's going to be privately, or someone can come along and buy the rights to it. But it doesn't serve the purpose of a compromise back and forth with the board to provide open space, all the things that Kathy's memo had asked for, such as site sheds. There shouldn't be fences in the covenant. It should say that there are no hedges or fences over a certain height, or none at all, so that people driving, biking, walking, strolling around this corner can see a lovely open farm. But that's not what an ag reserve is unless you put restrictions and covenants on it. So, you know, one question is, we should get a park back. And that should be somewhere also probably adjacent to this reserve area with covenants and restrictions so that you can see into a lovely area. Because the Fowler Farm is really stunningly beautiful, and it's one of the few open spaces in the village. But if those things and, and a park, probably adjacent, like a green belt kind of thing, are not in this plan, then no one is gonna enjoy this, except the private owner that can then seek to add a lot of things, and...
That's all you could require.
Excuse me?
Well, I have to be very, very, I've been very blunt with you on this. You cannot require dedication of a park to a public...
Okay, this is a negotiation, John, and, and I'm, I'm giving you a heads-up about, you know, some of the...
Well, that would be an illegal condition, Willa. I just, we're gonna get right to it, though.
Okay, some of the members on the board have expressed that they'd rather have a cluster subdivision with more, with smaller lots, with more homes on them, and then in return for that, more open green space. And we disagree with you, some of us, about the Old Town development, which we think is stunningly beautiful and provides wildflowers and a huge open space corner. And everybody likes walking by it, biking by it, et cetera. So, instead of something like that, this is a private, this is a privately-held ag reserve that somebody will, you know, have llamas on or have a, whatever they wanna do on it. And it's not the same thing as, you know, view sheds, which we would like to see view sheds. Or, you know, I'll, I'll just speak for myself, and then the other board members can chime in. But view sheds is something that is in the code, various sections of the village code. Talk about the importance of preserving view, you know, view sheds, open spaces that you can at least see. A restrictive, uh, environmental easement where at least the village can get access to the pond to clean it up.
You can't require that?
Okay, I disagree, John. What, because the case law, we've looked at case law, the case law that you provided is not on point. It has to do with, it has to do with clam men going down to the beach and hanging out on the beach. Okay, our lawyer can speak to that.
Only one person is gonna talk here, right now, right now, right now.
We, we disagree with you.
Is, is talking, so, let's, Willa, continue, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, those are a couple of issues. This is not green open space. So, the, the question, I think, for this discussion is how do we make it at least open views? And how do we put the park back in a place that's connected to this, so it's also open views? And I realize the public wouldn't have access to the park. But I think, I, I don't understand particularly why this is so controversial, because it just makes it a more beautiful development, both for the people that live there and the people in the village. So, the fact that it gets very contentious is, is sort of confusing to me.
Because you're asking for legal stuff.
But I, I disagree with that, but there's so many sections. There are various sections in the code that have to do with preserving groundwater, preserving site views, you know, sheds, preserving green open spaces, preserving the farmland feel of Southampton Village. Now, this is one of the, like, key, most beautiful spots, you know, that the Fowler's have, have, you know, preserved for the village over years. And so, the idea is to get something like across the street at Halsey, or like Old Town, where you have the beautiful open vistas, and they can, you know, still do a great development with a lot of houses and, you know, we don't, we're not against that. But we ha, you know, the provisions of the code require us to ask for, for site sheds, open space, and to preserve the bodies of water of the village of Southampton. One of them is Phillips Pond. The village has invested in like twelve mechanical, um, things that put back the carbon or whatever, you know, to make all the lakes in better shape. And if there's no access, if you put, you know, five more big homes on that that go down to the water and cause more pollution, you should have access. And I think the law is completely on our side on that point. Um, but it would be with notice, and like the case law suggests, that it would just be for the purpose of cleaning up the pond, which is not owned by the applicant or anyone else. It's, it's owned by, not by the village, but by an entity of the village. So, that is another point. And then the, you proposed and submitted covenants and restrictions, but they don't address the idea of, you know, no fencing so that you can see into these areas. And the ag reserve is a privately-held entity, so we're not getting a big green space. But by moving it there, which was hugely better, in my opinion, you do get these buildings that are already there. So, the idea with the restrictions, and the lawyers can, can figure that out, is how do you preserve this area in terms of the public going by it and seeing what the farm was in the past? Because that's also the legacy of the Fowler's, and that's something that, like, the community, I think, would like to share, seeing what that was like, not having it all closed off. And the, the development across the street, the Halsey Farm development, does exactly that. You have a big open field, and Old Town does too. So, we have a basic disagreement about whether that contributes to the village and is a lovely development, or is a wasted opportunity, because in ag reserve, you can try to put more buildings on it and do whatever you want, and then it causes a lot of litigation sometimes with neighbors and so on. So, that's the direction, you know. You're asking for ease, uh, for flag lots, shared driveways, which is not in the code.
Yes, it is, ninety-seven thirty at the... Yes, it is, ninety-seven thirty-eight E.
We, we would have to deviate from the code to grant that, because this kind of subdivision asks for roads, and all of the other subdivisions have roads. But you're asking us to go, you know, to change that, but not willing to give some of the things back that we're asking for. So that's where it, you know, doesn't end up feeling like it's a back and forth, or some of those ideas are getting incorporated. Some of, some of them are, but, you know, I think the idea of having a park and having it adjacent. And there are provisions that talk about where groundwater is affected, you should have runoff areas, and you should have a protective green belt. Because the pond can overflow and, and then, you know, it can contaminate the groundwater, and this is a bioswale area. So those are the, those are the basic points, I think, you know, it's not so far from getting there. But we, we should be able to give you the feedback and, you know, have an open discussion here about it. So that we can reach for something that would be great for the applicant and also great for the village.
One of the things I wanted to point out is that the park requirement that you have is five acres, four hundred lots.
Right.
A park on the site with three thousand square feet. Two thousand square. So it's essentially about.
Well, I think in your first plan, you had twenty-seven.
That's why you don't see parks in village subdivisions.
So it was establishing a park requirement, is, is five acres, four hundred lots.
Right.
And um, twelve lots, so when determining the required, subtract out the area required for the park. So you take twelve one-hundredths of five acres, so this is seven one-hundredths of five acres. And that's what would be required, it's about three thousand and forty-six square feet.
Understand, that's what the code says, totally understand that. Can, can I ask a, uh?
If I may, just a moment, just to respond to some of the other things. Flag, flag poles are specifically allowed in the code, ninety-seven thirty-eight E. It has design standards, which we've met, but we're not, we don't need any balance.
Also understood that, but flag lots are disfavored in the master plan, and the code is not caught up with the master plan.
Y- y- yeah, uh, okay, but the code is what the code is.
I, I understand, and the master plan is what the master plan is, and that's up to the board to, to balance that, right? And the board has that capability.
Planning board has approved flag parks.
Pardon?
Planning board has approved subdivision.
I, I understand that, I, I, I understand that.
For a farmer trying to do something to preserve their property, so it wouldn't have further, wouldn't have to be developed immediately, which is what we're trying to do here.
Yep, I understand.
So instead of, you know, curving a road through here, that's now gonna bifurcate this property. Which is then gonna almost, you know, like, force the property to be subdivided, why would you do that? That, that, that certainly makes no sense whatsoever from a planning perspective, I mean, I've been doing this for forty-four years.
Yep.
So that, to me, doesn't make any sense whatsoever.
I, I'm not saying we, you know, we can't absolutely do it, I'm saying it requires us to reach and change. What other subdivisions have roads that circle around and go through, cuz it creates like, uh, wide open spaces. And it's favored, you know, to have, to have the roads go through and have it have roads. I'm not saying we can't do it, I'm just saying there are other things that are aspirational here, that, you know, that the applicant could do. And, and we, it should be back and forth, but it, it.
Go back to a ten lot yield.
Well, now is the time for, you know, just like, what, well, what exactly do we want to see? We need to give some sort of actionable and, and clear, unambiguous. We can't just say we don't like, we need to give the applicant the benefit of the doubt.
And I, and I think we, we will do that today, I, I just have one question, can you guys talk for a moment? Wh- what is exactly the plan for this property? Is it to be agriculture, agricultural use? Or is it for development, or is it some mix that you're trying?
Part of it, part of it is some estate planning that's going on.
Mm-hmm, right.
Uh, obviously, this is for agriculture, and it will be a covenant. I submitted sample covenants, I submitted a proposed covenant, but that's all the subject of negotiation with this board. For example, in terms of open view sheds, I mean, w- when the Halsey Farm gets planted with corn, it's planted with corn. You can't sit and see anything with the corn. The only, uh, we wouldn't have a problem with fencing restrictions, the only type of fencing restriction that you probably want here is, is deer fencing to provide. Which would be totally, you know, you'd look right through it, but, but we don't have, all of that stuff can be worked out in the covenant, but lemme, lemme answer your questions. Yes, the, the purpose, the, the thought is, for now, to maintain it, the entire thing in agriculture. But a, as I said to the client, you can say that, but never say never. We don't know what's going to happen, and I'm not gonna stand up here, we're here to subdivide this property. We're here to subdivide it for estate planning purposes, and hopefully to, uh, to, uh, to do it in a way that's extremely sensitive. Which we continue to see is not only sensitive, but I, I, I'm sort of, I'm sort of a little bit, I, I gotta be honest with you. I'm sort of blown away, I'm, I'm still looking for sort of a thank you on this, I'm just being really direct for you. But in any event, but you can't say to a planning board, all I wanna do is farm this, and I'm gonna use it for, uh, estate planning purposes. Because that could be different tomorrow, it, it really could. So I can't, yes, I can say to you that that's the current intention, but once you've approved this subdivision, these lots are lots. So a- anything, anything, anything can happen, that's all, and I'm not trying to change anything.
There can be covenants, restrict all of these.
I'm talking about the lots themselves, but what I am not talking about in terms of anything can happen, is this agricultural open space. Which is by definition different than open space up in the Moraine. It has a dual purpose, it's to provide open space, and Willa, to the extent that you want to maintain as great as possible. Consistent with, with agricultural practices, that open views as a view shed, we don't have any problem with that, and we can put that in the covenant. But this will be a covenant, that'll be submitted under two forty-seven of the general municipal law. And the covenant under two forty-seven of the general municipal law will require that this be used, not for residential. With one exception here, which we're gonna talk to you about, but not, uh, will not be used for resid- and we could limit, there's a, there's a, there's an existing piece of agricultural. Housing there, which we could, s- small cottage, we could limit, we could say it could never be expanded, we don't wanna, we don't want the tail wagging the dog on that. But what we say here is absolutely no, no residential use, without small caveat, no residential use of this property. Any expansion of these buildings, if any, would have to go to the planning board for site, you, for site plan review, I have no problem at all with that. At which point you may say, that's enough, we don't like it, that control will be there. But I'm gonna tell you something that's very, very important, the covenant would be filed under two forty-seven of the general municipal law. And to change that covenant, one has to go through a mandatory referendum in order to change it. It is indeed a, a covenant that runs with the land, well, two forty-seven of the general municipal law, look at it. There are no defenses like stopple or s- or latches or anything like that that can be used to subvert the restrictions. It's a very, very, very powerful tool, and it doesn't frighten me, because I've done that on so many subdivisions. Where in per- perpetuity, this is restricted to agricultural use. And if you're uncomfortable with some of the way people have tried to expand that use, that's part of the negotiation for the covenant. I welcome that, I really do.
Yeah, well, that's, that's one thing, these buildings, you know, you're getting these buildings, possibly getting these buildings on this ag reserve.
They're there.
Yeah, they're there, but because we, well, you know, I, okay, that doesn't have to be, they, they are there. But, you know, the idea is if it's sold to another owner, they either are not there anymore, or they can't be expanded in size. Or that's something that we have to negotiate in terms of covenant and restriction. Because you don't want a giant greenhouse necessarily, or a lot of things that have been argued are attendant to farming. That some people think are not necessary to farming. So instead of waiting for that to come up, that, that's what this board and the applicant, you representing them, should be discussing. So as not to have, you know, not to be arguing about it later.
Yeah, there's, there's.
I, I was actually very involved in the request for someone to have a baseball diamond. With a, a scoreboard and, and everything on an ag reserve parcel. And even, even with the language in some of these ag reserve parcels, it says compatible recreational uses, I understand why people were upset about that, I do. And so if you wanna prevent those sort of things from happening, which I understand is part of your function as a board, you put it in the covenant.
Yeah, so, thank you for answering my question, um, w- we're not estate planners, we're not charged with estate planning. And I think the way the board is thinking about it is, alright, it's agricultural for now, but we're considering a very long-term view. That it becomes a development at some point, right?
You have to, you have to.
And that's the way we think about it for planning purposes, and, and that, in that context, that's really what we're trying to get to. That when we're not here and, and this is developed, that we end up with a well-thought-out, very nice development. That's gonna fit with, it, it's gonna serve the, the village of Southampton and the people there.
You have to assume the day after this subdivision map is filed, someone has the legal.
Yep.
Ability to build houses on these one of these lots.
Yep.
A- and if you don't do that, you're not doing your job, so you're not gonna get an argument with me about that.
Exactly, so that we're all on the same page, and I think that what we were, in this latest version, what were the, the number one priority of the board. And stop me if I'm, if I'm not speaking for everyone here, the number one priority of the board is that view shed on the corner. That, that is the top priority, alright? Um, there's some, there is some disagreement as to what that view shed, what it should be, what it should look like. Is it a park, is it privately owned green space, landscape that the, that you've gotta come back to the board with a landscape plan? Or is it something in between that?
Well, the typical ag reserve, we're providing agriculture here, though.
I, 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 I understand that, right, I understand that, but I don't think we have consensus on that yet. There is a, there are some people that say, you know, if this is a development, it's landscaped green space. It's not being farmed anymore, and the ag buildings have to go. I'm not, there are just some people that are, that's one of the things that's, we're still wrestling with. But the top priority is that view shed and preserving that view shed. And, and there are a lot of, uh, it can look, uh, uh, we, we all know, it can a lot of, look a lot of different ways. And I don't think anyone's prepared to be specific on that.
That's okay.
Yet, um, so that, that's the number one thing that we're looking for, and this is a big step in that direction. So we very much appreciate that, um, anybody else wanna get to the, the other points?
Some, some of, which, you know, which we wrestle, w- we're getting comments from people, uh, running for office. People that remember, uh, DePietre saying the hedge could only be so high for the Halsey things and wrote in the.
That's fine.
There's a lot of history with it, the, the, the history going backward and history going forward, that we're trying to wrestle with it to provide a direction. It is definitely contrary to a public hearing and people coming in the three minutes and doing it. But we're trying to reflect some responsible opinion that may break loose.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And we're, we're, that's the, we're, in, in exercising our duties, it's, it's off balance sheet, but it really could becomes on balance sheet for the goals. And that's, I, I'm being gentle about it, but I won't tell you the names, there, there are people that said, hey, I'm running for office. And why don't you have in every one of your sessions, the community preservation board listening in as to what they're gonna do? I said, what are you talking about? This has happened before, lawyers come in and say, take the, the CPB and sell it to them, I mean, this is. The jurisdiction expands for this sort of stuff, and you guys know it, it's, it's part of your, your, your line of work, this is what happens.
You know, take a look at what we have in front of us.
Yep.
With blinders on, looking disciplined, just at what's proposed in terms of the map proposed, in terms of the covenant. And what specific feedback that we can give.
Let me summarize that for you then, cuz I think we're at that point, let me just, so, number one is the view shed, right? There's gotta be a view shed.
When you say that, are you saying that the, this, this position is where you would like it?
Yes, yeah, right, yeah, right, so you, that, so that, the, the, you know, the high traffic is coming down, going east or west on Wickapog.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, the most people are gonna benefit from this beautiful view shed if that's where it is, right, so that's number one.
Work out the details of the visual name.
And then possibly expand the, the view shed, I think, to be more of a green belt, because of the possible runoff and more, you know.
Yeah, let me get to that, before you respond to that, let me get to, let me get to that, I mean, that, look, I think that's the right size in terms of percentage of property. Based on the comps, I haven't heard any comments that we wanted more than that, yes, no?
Well, there, there were, the comments that we might prefer a cluster subdivision with smaller lots and more open green space.
Before you respond.
Because this is not open green space, as, as we said, this is potentially developable, and it's an ag reserve, it's not really.
Time out, so let me, let me.
Dedicated, dedicated green space, dedicated to the village, if you have a cluster development, I think some of us feel that you could have more density. And we would be willing to have more density and depart from the code in order to have more green space preserved. For the public, so, so that would be a cluster development.
Just jumping in, the village cannot require a dedication for public access to public use to any green space.
Yeah, understood, and so, um, let me ju- let me just be precise here for a second, so the green space, and this is a great step forward, right? So we're moving in the right direction, the second is, flag lots are disf- disfavored under the master plan, and that's gonna be a tough hurdle, okay?
You have an existing code that's explicitly allows flag lots.
Okay?
You're not gonna get anything else here.
Let me land, I'm just telling you where this is falling out, so there are four points. Uh, the second is an easement for access, the third is an easement for access to that lake, to the extent that it needs to be, um, uh, uh, cleaned up. Right, so, you know, somehow, if we gotta get in there, and i- if the village has to get in there and clean that, they gotta be able to do that. You know, whether it's an easement or there's some plan that you can do that. Number four is that, that, uh, the buffer and bioswale, so there's a bioswale proposed down Wickapog, you know. And we need to protect that lake, right? And the bioswale, and if there's a buffer along the lake to kind of protect runoff, right, when it is developed, right? Somehow we've gotta address that issue, so those are the four big ones, let me just.
Say, I just wanna say where that is, I, I, I'm not familiar with the bioswale, what you're talking about.
So there's a, a proposal for a bioswale that goes along Wickapog Road, along, you know, this, um.
Down here?
Yeah, exactly, not, not to the, where you have green yet, I haven't seen that on any plans.
These are residential homes.
Yeah, but they're putting a bioswale.
In their front yard?
Yeah.
Between the street and the home?
Yes.
I'd like to see that plan.
Okay.
Also, in terms of where, so where can I get that plan, so I'd like to see.
I can, um, Rich, I can share that with you, um, okay, I can share that sheet.
So, Rich, that's something we gotta figure out, okay, cuz we wanna be consistent with that.
I wanna, I wanna see it, so.
Yeah, okay, and then, uh, and then, so those are the four, uh, big points, and then the fifth one is the master plan also favors. Cluster developments, right? Town code requires you present a town, a cluster and, and a standard development, right? Uh, village code doesn't do that. Um, I think that, you know, the question is, have you guys considered that? If you're, if you, if you're worried about density, right, so den- density is, is less important, is not on our major criteria. Cluster is, is one way to deal with that, and a higher density is another one, it's, that is not a requirement, that is just a question.
So this is not a cluster subdivision per se?
Understood.
All these lots comply.
Right.
Like, every cluster subdivision that the village has approved has had twenty-five percent open space, and we are voluntarily providing twenty-five percent open space. With the lots we have, so you effectively have a cluster, the, the owners have generously reduced density and given you open space. And still make lots conform with the required zoning in the village.
To- totally, totally get that, let me be crystal clear, we're not saying you have to do a cluster, we're saying if you wanted more lots, you know, if you wanted to give more density.
We don't want more lots.
Okay, but it's just, it's out there, right, it's just.
If we provide twenty-five, if we provide more lots here with twenty-five percent open space, that's consistent with every subdivision you've done, so why would you put more lots in here?
Uh, I, oh, we wouldn't, it's, 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 it's just.
That wasn't the number that was thrown out with cluster subdivisions, it was higher percentage, I mean.
Where's that number coming from?
You're not getting one.
We're, we're not in the town, but the town does more like closer to fifty percent, I know, we're not in the town, but once we do a cluster development. It's a negotiation about how much open space there is, so you say twenty-five percent.
With every subdivision.
Other people, you know, I don't know how much Old Town is, but it's higher than twenty-five.
It's not open.
It's not, but. Or Halsey across the street.
Across the street is twenty percent, and that was a cluster, we're giving you the, all the benefits of a cluster without a cluster. In other words, we're at, we're, we're giving the lots that conform design.
Space like the wildflower garden or the buffer from Old Town, and, and.
Well, under, under a standard yield subdivision, we can demand open, request open space where we have a rational access to a compelling village.
Yeah, there's a lot of compelling reasons and a lot of code provisions, um, and I'm not, no one's demanding it, it's, it's being discussed. And, and we're relaying it to the applicant's attorney and the planner so that they.
Talking about code provisions that I don't exist.
Following any, I'm not following a lot right now.
I just find it curious that there's a discussion that are happening outside in the context of this room amongst people other than you, that we don't have any information about.
I don't know any, I didn't, I have no idea what that, I, I, there are no people.
Talking to?
I didn't say I was talking to anyone, oh, I said other board members, other board members. If we talk one-on-one with another board member, which is not, there's no open meeting laws violations, if that's what you're suggesting, there's just discussion.
Talking to third parties, there are people running for election and running for other positions, who are you talking to?
No, there's, I.
And now making comments about this plan that aren't in the. And now making comments about this plan that aren't in the public significant due process.
So, so let's, let's talk about the comp, what, let
Uh, uh, okay, but there's just some disagreement about, this is not open space. This is an ag reserve.
It is, it's an ag reserve.
And and the things that people on this board have been drawn to are the wildflower open space or the Halsey just a field. So you just see a field. You don't see, that's what you see. And it's guaranteed forever. It's, it's given, so that's the benefit of a cluster development.
You keep on saying that, this is, I explained to you in two forty-seven, the general principle.
That's the benefit of a cluster development for the village. So if, the idea is if you had more density, could we have more open space that ran all along Fowler Street?
You're not getting more than twenty-five percent open space. You are not getting more of a percentage of open space than this here.
Okay. Okay, John, that's kind of debatable, right? It's, it is.
Is, no it's not. It's not happening.
Okay, it, okay, that's not clear, okay.
You'll recognize that you're ahead beside that. If you're gonna try to do something so out of your jurisdiction,
Okay. Okay. No one's doing anything. It's being discussed and keep it simple.
Based upon nothing. Give me these code sections. You keep on talking about code sections. You don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, not true. I'll get you the code sections, but each, okay.
You don't know what you're talking about. Your asshole admonished you and you ignored him. And you fought with him.
Okay, John.
Sorry.
John. He didn't admonish me.
Yes, he did.
Time, listen.
I'm, I'm, I'm urging everyone to be very cautious at the moment.
Yeah, listen, let's just turn it back a little bit, right? And let's just go over the, uh, key points to this one, right? Green space, right, which we're moving in the right direction. And I think there, there is some, uh, negotiating or some discussions is a better word that need to happen to to determine exactly what that green space looks like.
But you, you as a chair indicated this is the location. And you also said that you think this is the appropriate size for the subdivision. You said it earlier.
Uh, I personally believe that when you look at the comps, right, that that is the appropriate size. Now, Old Town, I think, is not a good comp, right? Because you've got that wildflower corner, but you've also got that piece on the other side, the northeast corner of Wickapog and Old Town that it had to be contrarian, so
Different issues.
And and there's that buffer along Old Town, um, so, and then the, the piece that the Fowlers gave along there. So I wasn't there when that was all negotiated with the trustees. That was predates me. So it's, it's not as clear of a comp as the other ones are. But this
It didn't do, if I may, it didn't do what every planner and every planner on the east end and all the, all the documentation and all the lawyers all say you're supposed to do.
Yep.
It didn't do what you're supposed to do, which was to take that open space, which was the same percentage as this, and put it in one piece.
Yep, yep.
So what you have is this green in there that nobody can get to legally, which is nice for the owners, but useless for the public.
Yep.
And then you have another open space area on the eastern part, which is, can't be far.
Totally get that.
It was a disaster.
Totally get that. Thank you for the history lesson. But we're, we're, we wanna look forward, honestly.
We, we got, we, we got that is We're just saying it's, it's not totally opposite.
Yeah, so, you know, it's out there. It's something that we've all looked at, but we've all looked at the other ones too. And we're trying to take history and also, you know, think forward, right? Because, you know, those are twenty plus
I appreciate that.
And open space, open space used to be a low private hedge. Now, if we're not culling the deer, it's a large fence. Everything, the details change. We'll deal with those. We'll deal with those.
Alan, exactly. That's, we sit down and we talk about how effectively
We know that. You know, we'll deal with those.
Bind the hands of any subsequent owner by what's been agreed to. But that's something that can happen. And that's why I gave all these
Yep.
The, the And the, the F
Ag easements and proposed one. If you don't like something that's in there, take it out, tell them to get it out.
Chairman says The chairman says that the Phillips Pond is an undiscovered pond. The F and C trustees in effect own it. The, the, the pollution is probably not for the, the village trustees. Some access to it. It's a low, low land. It's very low. It's wonderful land. It drains all the time. But the F and C trustees, I think, have jurisdiction over that pond.
There's an aerial here that's very healthy.
Yeah.
Right, but so
There's Jewel Pond and they have, they own the ponds.
Yeah, just to summarize, gre- green space, you know, we're moving in the right direction. That corner's perfect, you know, that's a, that's a big improvement.
Thank you.
Um, and and something that's very, very important to the board. What that green space specifically looks like, we gotta talk. The easement, the keeping that, being able to clean up that pond at the right time is is also very important to the village and the board. Okay?
I hear you.
The flags are disfavored, right? They're disfavored in the master plan. Um, and I think the, um, the discussion, the, the, the thinking on the board is, you know, flags are gonna be an uphill battle, right, going forward. Not just here, but in a lot of different places. So we're not, and then, let me just, let me
Your existing code allows them, and it has standards, and we meet the standards.
Yeah, we've already talked about that. John.
So you'd like us to look at extending the coal section?
I, I, look, I'm, I'm not a planner, right? Yeah.
Well, but, but that's, that's net worth design. That's okay. It's okay.
Right, right. I, that's not my job to, 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 to design it. But, you know, flag lots, I, what I can say is the consensus here is flag lots are disfavored.
You wanna get rid of the flag lots and we're talking
There's gotta be a better way.
I'd like to talk about why. And what happens, it's something, it's sort of like a talisman. People talk about disabling flag lots without really knowing what's going on there.
Yep.
If you have these two flag lots and they're subject to a common driveway agreement of whatever width you tell me, whatever width you tell me, and restrictions on plantings and buffering so that there can be no impact to emergency vehicle accesses, access, it's the same, de facto, functional thing as a road.
Yep. Yeah, I understand, uh, John. And that's why I didn't, that's why I didn't say flag lots are a flat no. They're just disfavored. And, you know, is there a better way?
So I think people say, you know what hap- It's surprising because other planning boards, it's not disfavorable. And and most of them are spelled out here. I've done many subdivisions where you use the flag lots.
Yep. No, but Yep.
There are even some communities that you don't even have to have legal frontage on the street. You can use access across someone else's property as access easement.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. This is
Totally understand. And then
So it's not, it's not, it's not an unusual planning thing.
We didn't write, we didn't write the village code, but the village code has a provision that flag lots are not to be favored unless it's, it's necessary.
Doesn't say that, Alan. Alan, it doesn't say that.
The code doesn't say that.
Well, it says the board should follow the master plan, the master plan, which was just written, says that.
Ninety-seven thirty-eight. I read, I read, I, I read the vil- this new village plan.
No, read the existing village code.
Look, I, I, I don't wanna debate code, and I don't wanna debate the master plan. It's very clear in the master plan that
No, we're talking about the plan. I understand the code.
Flag lots are are disfavored. It's not, doesn't say they're not allowed. It just says they're disfavored. So we're trying to be consistent with that. And then the last one is this buffer and bioswale issue, right? We've gotta figure that out, right? And the whole cluster thing was just an option. It was just a door that we wanted to make sure that you guys understood was open if you needed it, right?
Yeah, we don't need that. I appreciate it.
And if you don't need it, fine. Just say
Cause the only reason we would want a cluster is to make more lots, and we don't want more lots.
Thank Yeah. So just say, you know, understood, thank you, but no thanks. That's all.
Okay.
I mean, the, the mistake people sometimes make is when, oh, there's open space or this ag, uh, reserve area there, that must be a cluster.
Yep.
We're fortunate enough here where we have a client who's community minded enough to give up five lots, and therefore we can create lots that conform and at the same time create a lot that has an ag reserve on it. And if you're concerned about the ultimate use about this, we put it in the covenant, like every other subdivision does. If there's certain things that you wanna see in terms of view shed, we put it in the covenant. If you wanna maintain jurisdiction going forward on these buildings, we put it in the covenant.
Mm-hmm.
Because you know something? There's nothing in the village protocol that says an ag, agricultural structure has to go to site planning. As a, as a matter of fact, there's an argument that it's contrary to the, uh, like the farm laws. But if you want to maintain control over these things, well, put it in the covenant. And so you have site plan approval. I'm not here to fight about those sort of details. I, I'm really not. I don't, I think you have a, 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 an applicant and a sta- and, uh, representatives of the applicant that are listening to this. But I will tell you that to ask for more than this, given what has happened in the village, given also the massive reduction in density, I find it a lot of territory to ask for more than this.
Yeah, we have a disagreement about that, but we can, we should talk specifics such as the environmental easement to give the village access to clean up Phillips Pond. Because that should probably potentially be along this area here. And our attorney can advise you about case law having to do with environmental easements for the purpose of cleaning up the pond because
He already did. He said you can't force public access. I just wondered
Okay.
Well, there is, there is an important distinction.
Okay, that's, then that's separate from the conversation that's
Joe, do you have case law?
I do, yes.
Okay, thank you. And I, 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 listen, I, I will stand corrected if there's some sort of limited, uh, power to enforce that sort of easement. I just also wanted the board to look at this. Um, what's the ownership pattern right here?
We presented this before. This is, I'm on the building in Southampton. This is a preserved piece of property. Anyone actually really wanted access is that the closest place to get any use, you get money, you buy that tail and you got access.
You
Or you condemn a twenty-foot strip.
I think, yeah, I, I think
You have a plan instead of extracting.
That's the conical interest piece, that's
Totally get it. We just have to figure it out.
I thought the cor- the corner piece is, isn't that it? No, I know that. No, I know that. I thought, I thought that corner piece was
But we still have to
It's also putting a burden, a burden on one property under where you have multiple properties around this pond that may have
Maybe not.
But Richard, that's, like, our mandate is in a subdivision negotiation to ask for environmentally appropriate things. And they're spelled out in multiple provisions. That that's our mandate when we're negotiating a subdivision. It's not, this is the last open space on the pond. You're putting five houses on here, so it's appropriate to ask for access.
It's appropriate for you to do planning, cause you're a planning board. And it seems to me if you're gonna do planning, you should find out what's the most appropriate way to get to the pond.
Yeah, but subdivision
And not just say, let's shove it through somebody else's subdivision. That's what we got before.
Okay. Covenants and easements are part of what happens in a subdivision.
Nice and quiet when she talks, can I?
Yeah, yeah.
So if you're, if you're a planning board, why don't you go back to the trustees and say, we should use some CPF funding to try to get access where it's appropriate? Instead of saying, well, I've got this applicant for us, so I'm gonna twist his arm to try to put it in a place that really isn't an appropriate place to put it. That's the most appropriate place to try to put it. And that's where you should try to arrange with this village to get access to the pond, which I think is probably not an unlawful goal for you. But put it in the right place. Don't just, don't just twist somebody's arm to put it in a place that doesn't work.
Putting, calling it twisting someone's arm as opposed to what the job of the board is, 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 you know, is not appropriate.
What the job of the board is.
That's, it, it, this is exactly the job of the board, spelled out in the code, to ask for environmentally nice things that reflect how the village used to look and, you know, how we would like it to continue to look in the context of a particular case that's in front of us.
Which is why all the lots conform to the setback in Florida.
Like a quasi judicial situation where we're judging specific cases that come before us. We can't like go off into other areas to ask for something that is coming up in this particular proposal, where you're on a body of water that's sensitive, that needs to be cleaned up from time to time. And then, you know, in return for the development rights, because there's no absolute development right. It's a negotiation. And the board
What? What?
Guys, like, like, like
John
There's no I'm also, wait, wow, wait, are we
Yeah, you have a right to develop. And this is the process. It's a negotiation.
Excuse me? What did you say?
I said you have
I'm not asking you for development rights.
John, don't be rude. Okay, don't be rude.
That's enough, okay? We're not gonna go here, right?
There is a right to develop. And this is the process. It's a negotiation.
And we're, we're gonna be polite here. And if Willa has a point, if Willa wants to say something, she can say it. If you need to to correct a misunderstanding, you should jump in, and then you guys will get your chance. But this interrupting and arguing is not going to happen. Is that clear?
Yep.
Crystal, my apologies.
My point was if there's an absolute right, you just go and develop it. You don't need a board. But because you have a board here, the board's role in my, I mean, it's just, it's not my view. It's just the board in terms of the, all of the, um, statutes that enable a board is to try to get the most beautiful, most environmentally, environmentally sensitive plan that maintains this property for the enjoyment of the community to some extent in terms of site sheds, et cetera, the things we're talking about, access to clean up the pond. It happens to be on a major body of water that is cited by the town of Southampton as a very polluted, sensitive area. And that's something that's going on now. So this is like the development negotiations of the day. So to act surprised or angry or pissed or whatever it is, is just, it's not appropriate. It's a discussion. And you should be hearing the feedback, cause I happen to be the mouthpiece for it, but it's not just me. That's clear. So, uh, you know, I'm just communicating it to you so that we can negotiate.
And the, and the feedback is, feedback is from the board, not from outside influences?
Yeah, I already said that. Yeah, I don't, I don't talk to anyone. I'm, yeah.
I just, I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit of a trust. I just wanted to hear.
Yep. Yeah. Uh, look, um, I, I understand what Willa's saying. And I, and I, and, and I just wanna make sure we're being crystal clear here, right? Um, we do not want this to be an adversarial process, right? Uh, to the extent that we can avoid that. And I think we as a community have an issue that we have to address here. The door is closing. This is the last piece of property where there's access to the pond. So we, as a community, as a team here, have to figure out how to address some issues here, right? And maintaining access to that pond to clean it up is a critical component of what we're thinking about. How we do that? We're totally open, right? Any suggestions? We gotta work together to figure out how to do that. Is it
There's no access now.
I, I know, but that's not right, right?
Uh, well, the case law says
So there's, there is a distinction.
Unless you can, okay. I'd love to see it. I, I'm, I can be stern directed.
Okay, so the, the distinction that I've seen from the case law is there is the case law that you rightly cited with East Hampton, which is dealing with public access and the right of ingress, degress to the general public to come
Hmm, yeah.
to and from the water body. And you were correct that, in that case, the court pointed out that there was no pre-existing ingress or egress.
Yep.
Access.
Yep.
There is at least one case I know from Court of Appeal in my notes here, Smith versus Town of Mendon. I'll pull the citation for you. Um, in which the Court of Appeals found that it was not unconstitutional taking to have a very limited access easement for the town in question to get access to a water body on thirty days. Certified bail, return receipt requested, request to the landowner for the sole purpose of moderate water quality, environmental quality. Very limited scope easement. So that's Smith, first Town of Mendon.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's
Seven eighty-nine, NYS second, six ninety-six. And that's Court of Appeals, two thousand and four.
We do that, we do that with permits sometimes. I've done that. And all that is, is to allow the, um, the, 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 uh, the agency to go in and make sure, somebody's going in and saying, I'm gonna sink a well here. And at this particular time, there is no ground for intrusion into the well, um,
Sort of inspection, basically.
It's only for inspection purposes. That's a, certainly the case for, I think it's the one I'm familiar with, which I don't think is germane, but, uh, we'll talk about it. I have to talk about it.
Yeah. Yeah. So that, that, that's, that's a problem for the community. We gotta solve it, right? Same with the bioswale and the buffers, right? We gotta, we gotta
The village hasn't done a thing about it while the subdivision came forward.
Let's, let's dig into this. Let's get the details on this. But this is on our radar right now, okay? So we have to
There's a bioswale movement. There's a bioswale movement of bioswale.
No, 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 I'm not talking about the bioswale, I'm talking about the access.
Oh, yeah, it's
If it's the village, if there's a problem with Phillips Pond, then why is the village said, let's condemn a piece of property to get access? Cause you have the right of condemnation.
Yeah, I do.
There's a public purpose and a public need. You couldn't condemn that access down in the corn. I'm not, I'm not trying to speak from the tur- as an attorney, but I know these, having done this for so long, you have the right to do that.
Yeah.
And that's the appropriate place.
Genic- generically, the village is increasingly concerned about it. Uh, Cooper's Pond has a road against it. That's not an issue.
Mm-hmm.
Halsey Pond is a problem. It came up in the subdevelopment of the bottom of Halsey Neck Lane. That problem isn't gonna go away. This problem, it, it will develop on Phillips Pond, maybe on Jewels, but it, it has to do with the goddamn right of the F and C trustees to own the water bottoms to get access to make the, the, there, there are subsidiaries for certain purposes of the town and of the village, but they have to behave.
Village to do.
It's, it's coming.
What the village should do regarding Halsey Pond?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of stuff.
Start crafting blacktop culverts, bring the storm water into the pond. I've seen, I drive by, I'm like, oh my god.
I understand. I understand. I understand. I used to own an excess, an exit from that pond, that pond, Halsey Pond, into, into, into the lake, into, into the bay.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Went, went, went through the land that I owned. I know that. But this issue is, has been raised.
Well, all I ask you to do is you're citing law. Give me specific laws.
Been raised.
That's what I'm entitled to. And you're just saying there are laws and there are statutes and everything like that. I don't agree with you. But you have to prove them to me.
Yeah.
John, talk to me about a specific
Yeah, I think that's the job of the board attorney, but I, you know.
Well, then don't hide behind some ambiguous reference to laws.
I, 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 I'm not hiding behind anything. I'm asking you for specific asks. As I said, I'm the one speaking here, but there's, there's others who feel similarly.
What, what is that meaning? What do you mean?
And, that means I've spoken to, uh, one-on-one with, there's just, I'm voicing some of the concerns that have come up during these public meetings. We've had them for a bunch of time now, and you are, you know, flailing your arms and ignoring them, but there, it's in the code.
Captain, second, that's, 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 let's, let's just leave, let's, let's.
Okay, well, you know, you, you've been very rude to me, and you're cutting me off often, and, you know, I know it's in the role to some extent, but it's not. These are things that are in the code to ask for, for green space.
What things?
It's a timeout.
Open space, open space is in the code, protecting the environment's in the code, all of that is in the code.
Time, timeout. Yeah. We appreciate all the time and effort that's gone into this, and I think we felt that tonight, or whenever we got together next, it was time to give specific feedback on the key points for the planning board. I think that's what we did, right? Corner, perfect, great, you know, what it looks like, yeah, what it, what, but the specifics of that, we gotta work it out.
Yep. You use it in here, or something, you work it out. Flaglots are a problem.
Flaglots are an issue, keeping the pond clean, and how are we gonna figure that one out, access, and then, you know, we've gotta get, dig deeper on this, you know, what's the village doing? And I'm not an expert on it, on the bioswale and buffer and protect.
Yeah.
Those are the key issues. When we answer those questions, then we're ready to go. If we have good answers for this.
No, no, no. Okay, hold on a second, yeah.
Before, before you go.
Oh, sorry. That's a public hearing, schedule it.
Fair?
So to itemize it, that's fair, so we're talking about the acceptability of the flaglots, the open space, the, the position and the size of it, is that?
Yeah, okay. I think we've all agreed on the position, wha- 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 what we're gon- continue to talk about is the specifics of, you know, what is in the.
Code, comments.
The covenants and restrictions and the language and the site new and what happens with these buildings.
The covenants, exactly.
The size of the covenants.
Yeah, you know, the building.
What happens.
All right, we have two more, two more items?
Could I ask a, a question for that? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah.
No, just regarding the reserve area, could you just talk about if and when this is fully built out, how that reserve area is proposed to function now? Is it viable as farmland, and what happens i- if they, if the Fowlers or their successor no- are no longer farming that property, what does that, what does that look like? I just wanna make sure the board understands.
Well, typically what these covenants say is, because you cannot, you can't require someone to affirmatively require someone to farm it.
Right.
So typically what they say is if it's laying fallow, it has to be, and, and we put this in the covenant, and this is based upon forty-five years of doing this stuff, uh, multiple jurisdictions, if it's lays fallow, it has to be, uh, mowed on a semi-annual basis so that it doesn't get taken over by successional field growth. That's the specific language in those covenants. Um, you have to understand, ag open space is different from open space.
Right.
And, and the master plan does talk about preserving agricultural, agricultural open spaces, it's done across the street, and it's been done down the street as well. They have different components than merely open space. Typically, open space has to go into either, has to be dedicated to the public, or, you, since you can't totally require that, you, you can go into a homeowners association, that's the typical open space, but agricultural open space gets to be transferred, subject to those very, very, very tight restrictions on any sort of non-agricultural use. And I couldn't find, by the way, I could not find in all my searching, uh, a covenant, an agricultural covenant, that does not allow agricultural buildings used for bona fide agricultural use. Usually it's tied into section three of one of the Ag markets law, uh, so to make sure that it is a bona fide agricultural, uh, use. But that's, i- if you're saying all you want is open space here, you're turning a blind eye to all the attempts that have been made through the government process, through preservat- preservation of agricultural reserve, reserves, through acquisition of development rights to preserve agriculture, uh, on the east end of Long Island. So, yes, i- i- do you wanna make it so that, eh, eh, one of the public benefits can be, that people can, eh, eh, look into the ag reserve area? We can work that out. The only thing I have to make sure is that there can be some sort of fencing that can be totally visible, so that I don't have to tell you what deer can do to that sort of agricultural.
Sure, and thanks very, for clarifying that.
But other than that, I don't, I don't.
Quick, quick question on that one, 'cause it helps in our understanding and thinking, um, because those agricultural buildings that are there today serve the property across Fowler Street, and, and it.
Well, they serve both of them, yeah, both, both.
Yeah, but that, that's where all the farm equipment is to take care of all that farmland.
Yeah, two of them will, would, would have to go, regardless of whether or not we, there's, there's the two, I just wanna make sure.
D- but. That's. That's not my question. So my question is, um, across the street, i- does that have to be farmed in perpetuity, so that, um?
Okay. Well, right now, that's just a lo- one large lot, by the way, so.
No, that, that space, that's all nursery stock.
Lot number four. Yeah, that's, that's fully de- that's the development rights on there intact.
So that can be developed as well?
Yes, it can be, yeah, it can be.
Okay, right, yeah.
It, it is, correct me if I'm wrong, but even more than I, that's lot number, a large lot number four on a four-lot subdivision, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I didn't understand that.
Yeah.
And it requires that if it is fully subdivided, that it have open space, that's one of the points.
Yeah, one, one of the covenants, yeah.
But it, it wouldn't necessarily have to be farmed forever, right? So at some point, you know.
Well, effectively, because let me, if I, I think I can explain this without, yeah, effectively, it would have to be, because some component of any further subdivision of that large lot, like here, is going to have, some component, there's, there are one, two, three, correct me if I'm wrong, one, two, three lots and then a, a large four lot, which is the, s- much larger than zoning.
Right. Yeah.
When, when the owner goes in to subdivide that, some component of that subdivision is going to have to be an open space parcel.
Yeah, I got it.
That portion of it i- is gonna have to be.
Nah, I, yeah, I understand.
So probably what I would think would happen was, you know, the, 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 the town would look for some alignment.
Some alignment.
All right, and this is a question, right, um, across the street, same with this side of the street, um, at some point in the future, when you decided to develop, let's say, across the street, you could decide, we're gonna set up a HOA over there, and, uh, that open space that you acquired isn't gonna be farmed, it's just gonna be grass and landscaping, right? You could do that, tha- that, that option is on the table.
Oh.
That's speculative.
Yeah, well, no, not anymore, not anymore. If you, if you view what the town does, 'cause people, what do people have tried to do?
Yeah.
People, people have tried to take a piece of open space and say, okay, we've got this open space, we're gonna, we're gonna lease it out to each one of these property owners and just have them use it as, as, as their extended lawn.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not saying about that, I'm talking.
They have affirmative farming requirements for the open spaces.
So what does that mean?
It means that it must be farmed.
It has to be farmed.
And they also have resale limitations from the valuation.
So, so, so thi- this is helpful just for me learning, right? Um, so in the town, the town side,
On doing, on doing the.
Okay.
If you were to develop all that, that's currently being, uh, uh, nursery stock, right? You could put houses there, but the open space, the town would require you to farm that in perpetuity.
Right. That would be a negotiation. I'm just gonna disagree with you, which, I just, well, that would be a negotiation.
Okay, unclear, yeah, well, there's.
But, but, but it would be subject to an agricultural easement that would limit anything other than agricultural use.
I get it. Yeah. I understand that, yep.
Or it would stay fallow.
I understand, I.
And I will tell you that those covenants now provide that you can't just make it, the only way you can make it long is if you have a solid farm.
If. If.
Yeah, I get it, I understand, that's all.
If, if it's convenient for you, otherwise, save us the resources, can you give us a summary of what it is? I know there's the, the, the three, three little ones and the big one.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna cap the subdivision now.
If you bring us up to speed on that, because we don't want, we've been, I've been told by people what it, what is over there, and I don't wanna guess, so you can just tell us, thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna cap the subdivision.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you can look it on the tax.
Thank you.
You can cap the subdivision now, but I, you know, you know, I will say that it wouldn't be appropriate for the village to ask me to somehow, you know, roll my.
No, we totally are not.
Well, we're, are we discussing the, the subdivision map for Halsey across the street and Wicca Park down the road, or in Old Town down the road?
Just the facts. The town. Across, across Wicca Park Road.
No, you're, you're talking about the town.
The town, town.
Yeah, I was just getting to the subdivision map, that's fine.
Just town.
That's, that's easy, that's easy.
I, I, yeah, look, we're, we're not, th- you know, there's no agenda here, it's just trying to understand what's going on all the way down Fowler Street, 'cause it's all related.
Understand. I hear you.
And Will need to, Alex, correct me if I'm wrong, because this is within five hundred feet of a, of a boundary, when we get to that point, we'll have to refer it out to the town of Southampton and the county of Suffolk.
Absolutely.
So they'll have their chance, I don't wanna say, make their statement or, or review it at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it, it's a referral, which I, which I would, which I would ask you to be particularly aware of, because on a few occasions, I've had to ask the zoning board of appeals, on numerous occasions, to refer things that are on the ocean, and I've, I've almost felt like referring.
Yeah.
And just for the board's edification, once they're referred out, there's about forty-five days, right?
Forty-five days.
The county, uh, the county and the town, correct? They have forty-five days in which to give, anyway, I'm getting down the road, but that is where.
My understanding is both the town and the county ge- get a look at this, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, sure, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, it's not just one or the other.
Correct.
Both of them.
Anything, any other questions?
Well, yeah.
John, one more, one more question. Wha- what is the, would be the anticipated future in those, of those buildings in the event that that land is no longer actively farmed?
It, it, it ha- it, it's gonna be subject to a agricultural reserve covenant. If you want to have some time period that suggests that they should be removed if the property isn't being actively farmed, which I'm sure that could be part of a negotiation.
Okay.
Because at that point, if it's not being actively farmed, one of the buildings there, there has to be some nexus, there, there must be some nexus between, it's interesting, it doesn't have to be nexus between, um,
Yeah.
this is very substantial law, there doesn't have to be nexus between that parcel al- alone, it can be nexus between that parcel and, and other parcels that are used in conjunction with the farmland. But if you wanted, we could talk about it, sure.
John, that's exactly why I asked the question.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
We could talk about some sort of, what's this sun, sunlight provision if it's not actively farmed, yeah.
Thank you. Halsey gave me the facts.
So just for, for byway of summary, so everyone's on the same page, I remember there were four bullet points that we bought up, we were talking about acceptability of flaglots, the open space, both the size and the specifications, two more, correct?
So the first one is open space with, um, you know, green, the green, the green space, green view, right, right? So location is right, um, so that's, that's, I think we're moving forward, the specifics of what it should look like, still to be discussed.
Hmm.
Flaglots are disfavored, right? That's, that's all I'm gonna say on that one, we understand the code and, uh, and the master plan.
Okay. Let's review it.
Um, the, the, and it's all of our problem, it's all of our challenges, how do we keep that lake i- clean, or if it has to be cleaned, we gotta figure that out, 'cause the door is closing on access on this property, so it's something that, you know, any idea is a good one on this one. And then the, uh, last one is, we've gotta get smarter on the village's bioswale proposal and buffers, and how that's gonna impact this.
Yeah. When you say buffers, you, you realize that the lots all have the required setbacks, so that we're actually out of jurisdiction of the, of the, the, of the, uh,
Yeah, hell yeah. Yes, but.
Their environmental.
What lands setbacks.
But don't we all wanna be.
Now, we're fully out of jurisdiction of the, of the department of environmental.
Yeah, but don't we all wanna be good citizens here and have it so it's clear to everyone?
Explain it, I'm not being, I'm not being.
Wait, um.
We're figuring, no, no, yeah, no, we wanna know, you know, if, if people say, hey, you know, how are we protecting the pond in this development, we wanna say exactly how we're protecting it, and it looks like we are, right?
Explain it to them.
We don't know.
The bioswale movement, it's a real movement.
Look at this right here.
Yeah, I, I'm not arguing, right? I, I agree, we just have to be able to point to that and say, yeah, that's where it is.
Well, and to the.
Well, there can be a green belt along Wicca Park all the way around, so that there's a ability to plant, so that plants, uh, they're absorb runoff.
It's. That, that is the more, yeah, that's the more important part of it, because there, there is a plan out there, I've seen it with that green belt along.
Yeah, that's like all along there. In case the bond overflows, there's planting.
Yeah, no, Ca- take a look, take a look at Kathy's thing, it's, it's, it's an idea who's got.
So the idea would be a continuation of what these.
And I think to the.
So, God, that's the important part.
So let's get to, let's get to the heart of this matter right now. At this particular point, I think it's incumbent on, on everybody to hear from the public. Particularly a lot of the fact that, you know, one of the members has said, and I appreciate Alan's, um, um, candor on this, that he's, people are approaching him on this.
Sure.
So I think from a basic due process, this application was filed over a year ago, from just a basic due process point of view, let me tell you what happens in this process. You get, it, it's a major, major subdivision application. So there are three stages in a, in an application, you have a sketch plan, and I'd like to set a public input, because you can get to that. Because guess what? Your design is, at least a- any public input that is properly looking for, in, in a way that, that has due process, so the applicant can see it. But then, once the sketch plan approval, there's a preliminary approval process, and it isn't until you get to the preliminary approval, it's different in the minor subdivision process.
Yep.
But it isn't until you get to the preliminary approval that you start investing some significant rights, because what the preliminary, the case law says that once you get preliminary approval, there has to be a significant change in factors in order to, the board to deviate from the preliminary approval. I'm not asking you to break the preliminary approval, I'm asking you to have a hearing right now, schedule a hearing, this application has been filed for, uh, uh, over a year, when was it filed? October twenty twenty-two, one could scratch their head and say, why the hell aren't these guys having a public hearing on this? I think it's a pretty simple request.
We will hear you, I hear you, and we'll take it under advisement, we'll get back to you on that one.
I'd like you to schedule a public hearing so we know when it's going to be, because now you won't even have the opportunity to schedule it for another month.
I, I hear you and we'll get back to you, okay? It's the best I can do, okay?
But what would we be having a hearing on if, if we have four or five outstanding issues, including, does it, is this roads that are running through here and around? Is it a road, or is it a?
The hearing wouldn't, wouldn't close the door on a concept.
But no, public, the public wouldn't be commenting on a plan that had been agreed to through this process, so.
Would you like me to finish with? That's not the way the process works, though. You're supposed to, before you make these decisions, at a certain point, hear from the public. You don't wait until you have everything figured out, every lot aligned the correct way, every covenant agreed to, all of that stuff, because essentially what you're telling the public is, they don't care what you have to say.
And public hearings can be, they call them kept open, or sometime continue the phrase, you can have multiple public hearings, and it burdens on the applicant, they only have to do the posting of the property, they're certified mailing ones, but we will keep publishing it in our minutes, in our agendas, so the public will have the continuing ability that as things change, or as conditions are added and taken away, the public can continue to view this.
Right.
We're not slamming the door shut or committing ourselves to one concept if we hold a public hearing on that concept.
John, I totally hear what you're saying, right? Until we got this plan, that green space wasn't in the right place.
Yeah.
Okay, but it is now.
So now, it is, and now we'll get back to you on, on what we're gonna do next, okay?
All right, well, then, please be aware, I'm gonna press very hard, as you would, as would not surprise me to say that.
I would ex- we would expect nothing less.
'Cause, no, 'cause at a certain point, at a certain point, at, at the fiscal year, at a certain point, you're not doing your job, if you, if you go through the process, there's a reason why there are public hearings in the South, in the Southampton village code and the state village law, which is, both of which govern you, and you're supposed to get to it fairly quickly.
Yes. Yes, we appreciate the reminder, but I think we understood that, okay? Anything else?
So, um. Okay. Uh, and, um, um, yeah, I, I, I just wanna add, I'm glad that we were able to satisfy you with the location and the size of the open space. I, I do, I want everybody to know that we think that we've given up more than the typical applicant would be. This is not a typical developer looking in there coming into a, this is not a developer looking to come in and maximize the number of lots and get these houses onto the market as quickly as possible, and that's why you see a seven-lot plan as opposed to, you know, we started with a twelve-lot yield and went to a ten-lot plan. We said to the client, and this was not, I'm just gonna say, you're not supposed to talk about attorney-client stuff, this was not an easy discussion, we said to the client, yeah, let's come in with something signi- significant, a significant density reduction, and some open space that's consistent with everything that else has been, else has been done. Every issue about how the agricultural area is treated can be, like every other subdivision I've handled over the last thirty-five years, dealt with in covenants. That's the way we, we, we do it. Uh, I, I'd love to see that case law, uh, we'll have a conversation with the client, love to see the bioswale. To me, bioswales are literally big bitches, that you've gotta get over them somehow, so I don't know how you access, I don't know how you access a, a residential lot. But if there's, if, if the village is thinking at it, we'll, take a look at it.
We get interested, okay.
See what we do. We certainly don't wanna be an impediment to that, if it can be done without, without, uh, you know, violence to subdivision.
Yeah, I just, I would like to point out that by moving the ag reserve, which is not green space, to the side there, which was our suggestion, you now potentially have five buildings that you don't have to start again to ask for approval for, which is kind of a boon, so, you know, in this negotiation, the, you know, applicant is getting a lot back also from these discussions. So I just would like to, to point that out, you know, as well as, it's, it's a very one-sided view that you're.
I, 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 I will just say, that, and this has always been my philosophy, okay, that this person owns the fee simple absolute to the land, I don't think of myself as getting anything back, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, and the board is here to, to speak for the village, to people who live in the village and would like continued enjoyment of a beautiful property.
I've already given an enormous amount. I live in the village.
Willa, you might wanna just.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop, I'm gonna stop this here, 'cause I think, um, yeah, I, I think we got a lot accomplished tonight, um, you know, appreciate the movement, I think it's been a.
Thank you.
Do you have any further specific questions, anything to get us all on the same page?
I think you guys, Mark in particular, are very direct.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and I think, I, hopefully, we sent a clearer message, right, 'cause now we're in a position to, to clear message, uh, there are a few things that need to be worked out here, and, you know, we'll continue to work, uh, work, towards working them out, okay?
I appreciate your candor, I also appreciate the obvious appreciation that you're sh- shown for the, for the efforts of the applicants and the team, and I do.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So, um, anything else, Alex, we did?
No, I think that's, I think maybe we, we would suggest that the board consider adjourning to the next, uh, meeting, which we now know is the fourth, and then we'll.
Yeah, so we're gonna, you wanna cons- move this, adjourn this to the next meeting on the fourth?
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be the, this will be the next board's next opportunity to take any action.
Yeah. Yeah, do, we don't need a motion to that, right?
I think that's.
Do a motion for that, so we're, we're moving to continue this to the fourth, but that, is that, or is that not the public here, and we need to make that clear?
I'm moving to December fourth.
Uh, I, we're not prepared to make that clear at this point, okay?
Okay, okay, so we're gonna move to continue this to the fourth, December fourth?
Yeah, yeah, now, i- if we deci- if we decided to have a public hearing on the fourth.
We got time.
We have.
We have time to.
The lag time is, I think, ten days, the applicant needs to do certified mail return receipt to the entire area, he has to post it.
Area, he has to post it on both road frontages, and it needs to be published.
Yep. Yep, yeah.
One, just that I'm going to renew my request on the fourth.
Yep.
To have a public hearing.
Good.
And I would like it if you would be able to be with the resolution prepared for, of a, that's, that's all.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, so for now, a motion to, um, to adjourn this to the fourth, to the fourth of December, okay? To the fourth. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Uh.
Okay.
Have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you too. Um, uh.
Richard, Richard, the village just put a bioswale in Windmill Lane.
Probably we go through the other applications.
Move to close the meeting?
Well, there's other applications we've published.
They dug the whole thing up, you, across from the library.
I'm waiting to see how much water comes down there.
Well, that's a separate issue, but they, they dug a, they, they dug a big ditch across from your library. It was just a big ditch, just took it.
It's like a river going down. I hope that works.
I rest my case, the project's underway.
Alex, uh, do you wanna go through, run through the agenda, what we need to adjourn?
Yeah, so for, application number two on the second page at the end of.
Mr. Bad, thank you.
LLC at seven eighty-three Hill Street. Um, this one, I, I think we had an applicant request to adjourn to November twentieth. Since we canceled that meeting, the board may wanna adjourn that also to December fourth.
Yeah, motion to adjourn that one to December fourth.
Was it, was it, was it seven?
Se- seventh.
Seven eighty-three Hill Street?
Seven eighty-three, that's the one next to, um.
Seven eighty-three.
The real estate office there.
Yeah, that's, that's McLaughlin?
Yeah, second.
Yeah, I, I.
Second.
I'll second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Application number three, so that was, uh, was moved to written decision. Um, so on site plan, we had no, um, new submission for twenty-two Windmill Lane, I did speak to the applicant this morning. Um, he indicated that he was waiting for some engineering comments, um, and they asked that we would, uh, the board would adjourn the application, while those are pending.
To the fourth.
Um, they didn't give a specific date, but I think the fourth would probably be.
So we're gonna adjourn that one, so what's the title on that one, Alex?
That's, um, eight sixty-five Merrick Holdings LLC at twenty-two Windmill.
Twenty-two Windmill.
So, uh, motion to adjourn that to December fourth meeting.
Um, I'll second that one, oh, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next one we have is, uh, an average site plan for Brian Kelly at twenty to thirty County Road thirty-nine A. I believe we did receive a request for adjournment to November, uh, twentieth, and we've had no new submission on that.
Okay, so motion to adjourn, to move that to the next meeting, which is December fourth.
I'll, you made it, I'll second it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, uh, last site plan we have is seventy-four, uh, White Street LLC at seventy-four White Street.
At the corner, yeah.
They did, um, express a, a request for an adjournment.
Yeah.
To.
They didn't specify a date.
No, they want, they wanna do more work.
So we, that one, we gotta, we need a specific motion to go to the fourth on that one?
Yeah, I would adjourn, um, to the fourth to give them more time for a new submission.
Seconded.
Title on that one?
Is at seventy-four White Street LLC.
Motion to adjourn seventy-four White Street to December fourth.
We'll go that one.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
They gotta do more work to divide the building.
The only, uh, other items on the agenda were, there was, uh, minutes for, um, September eighteenth, if the board had a chance to review those, I think those are scheduled to be, uh, approved.
I didn't see that.
Okay, that one might.
I was away, I.
Yes, let's, uh, let's, let's do that on our next meeting.
You didn't do those.
I didn't do them, but I did send them to you.
Did you, did you, okay, I, I somehow missed them, but I'll catch up.
We'll, we'll take those up at the next one, and then the only other discussion item we have is, we shared a, what's a draft calendar for twenty twenty-four for next year, so if the board members could take a look at that, and possibly for, um, the next meeting, it would be helpful if we can set the calendar for the next year. Um, there's some dates in January, where we may have to find an alternate date, because both Mondays, we would normally meet on fall and federal holidays, um, and then you could take a look and see and make sure that the time and schedule works for the board.
Yeah, yeah, so let's, let's all review that, knowing, hopefully, uh, we know our schedules, and then we can, uh, talk about it first thing next meeting and, and lock that in.
Great.
Yeah, would you, you know, would, well, you, you wanna move at least one day from King Day, if we can, the sixteenth.
Well, let's, yeah, we're gonna need to do that, but let's do it all at once, in case there are other dates in there, so we just have to do that at once. Um, Alex, thank you very much. Anything else?
Uh, no, I think that's all that I.
And six o'clock instead of five thirty?
No, we can't.
It was something that was, was discussed, um, some of the boards meet at six for specific reasons.
We're, we're trying to get it all consistent, so maybe we're, we're gonna get the five, the sixes to move to five thirty.
My only concern is the wonderful solution for Hill Street traffic that someone else is working on.
Uh, John, are, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm fine. There's nothing else that I want to add. Um, we need to exercise a lot of caution with Wicca Pog, we need to cut out most of our talk of discussing extraneous to the record, um, that can be imprudent, and with somebody like John Bennett, I beseech every one of us to remember that he is a very skilled, very good land use attorney, and if you're going to spar with him, you need to have your citations at hand, and you need to be able to explain where we're going here.
Yep.
And we all need to temper our expectations that, can we demand open space? Yes, but we need to make a very clear finding and a very clear showing that here is the valid village concern, and this is our nexus. So we, we need to just walk with caution.
Good advice, thank you. Motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second that one too.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.
Thank you, thank you very much.